Public hearing to order. Thank you all for coming. We have plenty of room in the front. Just like, ah, come on, Charlie, right to the middle. Right to the front. Those of you who are lining the wall, you may be here a while. There's room in the front. I'd like to welcome you here, behalf of the Isle of Palms City Council. I'm Dick Cronin. The rest of the city council is on my left and right. Hopefully you can read their name tags if you don't know who they are. Of course you do. We're here tonight to carry on and continue with our parking initiative. We've been dealing with parking on the island since I have an article I shared with various people that was first published in 1970, talking about the parking on the island, the confusion, the people coming to the island, the residents on the island, and the conflict that's caused there too. But you can all figure out how many years ago 1970 was. And this is our first real initiative that I think has the teeth to deal with the parking issues that are so prevalent in the residential communities. So we're going to be doing that tonight by having our consultants talk to us briefly, fifteen minutes or so, about the work product that they've put together. But before I go any further, I would like to recognize our representative from, where is he? Mike's, oh, there he is. Mike Satelli's with us tonight. Obviously, Mike used to sit in this chair, but he's also in a very important role for us and do wonders if we so need it at the state. I'm glad Mike is here. I'm certain he'll take notes if nothing else, to take back to Columbia. Maybe he'll straighten the form up. In addition, we have some representatives from Solomon Island. Susan Midrow is here, Andy Benke, and I guess Jerry, Jerry Finnart. I didn't see him come in, but assuming he is, he's hiding over here. So hopefully, as we learn and progress and put structure together, we'll be able to work along Solomon Island to put a whole barrier island component together for all of the citizens that want to visit the beach. As you know, we live on a beautiful barrier island, but we live in a community, the Low Country, that is growing by leaps and bounds as far as the population is concerned, and many of them come to this area and want to visit the beaches. And we are, we like to think, and I'm certain everybody in this room will agree, the premier beach in Charleston County. Consequently, we get gridlocked. And all of you have experienced it if you've been on the island during the summer months, certainly on weekends, in some cases, certain holidays, weekends, and even some midday when the sun is bright and the weather's good and the rains have stopped, maybe even this weekend you'll have a peak period. The consequence of which is it's a safety issue for all of us that are on the island, it's a safety issue for those that are visiting us, and it's a safety issue throughout the period. We can't afford to have people locked up, not able to move on and off the island for hours as a result of so much traffic flowing to and from the island. Not part of Stantec's work, work that we've done in the past, I always quote this number wherever I go, that we have a million vehicles traveling on and off this island in the course of the month. And that's been good for the last three, four years. A million vehicles is a lot to travel, both the connector as well as Breach Inlet, most coming across the connector, of course. Whenever we have an interruption in traffic flow, accidents, fender benders, things of that nature, we are literally locked up. And we've had occasions when both islands have had such on the bridges and nothing moves on either island. That's a public safety hazard and nightmare for those of us that are worrying about the city and the city residents, et cetera. It's a real problem. So we'd like to be able to control the ebb and flow a little better. We've hired Stantec over the last year and a half. They followed on after the planning commission, spent a number of years studying the issue of parking on the island, particularly in the public rightways, trying to put a focus on what can we do about it? These are public rightways. What can we do to help alleviate the problems that we all face? Stantec has spent a better part, well, first of all, took all, absorbed all the work that the planning commission has done, frankly, used a good part of it, heart of it, and is now putting some body on the bones of a plan we hope we can put forward and execute even for next spring and summer. So I'm going to ask Rick Day and his left-hand man, Rick Reeve is in the back of the room, who spent a great deal of time, you may have seen him, standing on the sides of the roads. They actually flew over the island over Memorial Day weekend every half hour, taking photographs, photographs then allowing them to make counts. So we have accurate details of a very peak weekend on what the traffic flow is and where the bottlenecks are and some plans for going forward, what we can do about it. So after he's done, we'll open it up for public comment. I'm assuming there's a base level of knowledge. It's been well communicated in the press as far as where the plan is, as far as going forward. It's not any, I mean, it's just, we've got a skeleton, a little bit of flesh. We have a lot more to work out in the next series of ones. Hoping to hear from you and you may help show how we put flesh on this boat. So I'll turn it over to Rick and please have a...
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. I look forward to it to talk a little bit about the process we've been through over the last little over a year now and some of the recommendations that are coming forth and receiving your comments. Again, my name is Rick Day and I'm a principal of the firm Stantec. With me tonight are Matt Kelly and Rick Reeve, who's also been involved with it, among others, with our staff. And we want to make sure we present you with enough material where you understand the concept and give us good comments so we can craft something that's meaningful and will work. But there's a lot of material that we're going to try to cover, so please bear with us as we go through this. And if you would, we'll take the comments at the end of the question, at the end of the presentation. So we want to talk a little bit about the proposed managed parking program that's, that'll be put before, before you for a comment. And the way I'd like to use my time tonight is talk a little bit about the history of the parking because we really didn't come in cold. There's been a lot of work, a lot of discussion between the planning commission and council over the years, and we've used that to really begin to craft our thoughts in terms of how to pursue this. We also collected a lot of data. We think it's important that this is a data-driven plan. So we wanted to make sure we understood the traffic flows, the parking characteristics of how we, how it works today and how it might resolve that in the future. So we talked about the data, and then we'll talk specifically about the proposed plan, and then we'll receive comments if that's okay for our agenda. So first of all, I want to talk a little bit about some of the history of the parking discussions. This is a slide, I know you can't read it, but it's a kind of a chronology. And as the mayor indicated, back in the 1970s, parking was an issue with the Isle of Palms. So it dates way back. But really, going back and researching the files of the planning commission, the council, really in earnest, 2008 onward, the council has really tried to grapple with these issues in terms of how to address them. And you can see, these are some of the bullet points, some of the meetings, and perhaps some of you have been to public meetings that are identified in this, in this slide here, to give comments and thoughts about parking and what needs to be done. And that has all been recorded and that was given to us at the outset of our work. So that's a very big benefit to us in moving forward. This is just a continuation of the discussions from '12, '13. Really, at the end of '13 was really in the part where Stantec began to really begin the crafting of the data collection and the information we're going to do and really collected data in the, in the peak season of this past year. And we've analyzed it, boiled it down, and we're going to present a little bit of that tonight, but that's kind of the chronology of all the parking discussions and that has occurred to date. Just to discuss briefly some of the concerns that were embedded in those files, public safety boils up to the top. And it's not, the way I look at it, it's not too terribly akin to the fire marshal who says, "For a public facility place, we have a capacity of ex-people." And really, the Isle of Palms, you have a capacity that really allows safe flow and movement about. And we want to think that we recognize that in terms of how we craft this plan to allow us to make sure we make it such that it's safe for people to move about the island and we don't have these safety issues. Again, vehicle access, emergency vehicle access, pedestrian safety, intersection site distance, fire hydrant access, some of the things that are mentioned in the previous studies that were related to parking issues. Congestion, again, a common theme throughout a lot of these discussions that you all have raised before. How do we make this parking plan help us with our congestion issues? Trash and debris from beach visitor parking was a number of times mentioned in the, in the materials as well as unpermitted uses of the rightway, in terms of people putting up fencing, shrubs, berms, whatever, to basically not allow public parking on the public right way. That's an issue that has been noted many times in the previous work. So those are some of just the underlying, it's nothing new to you folks, but underlying in terms of what we need to be thinking about, what we're trying to solve here. In developing a parking plan, we need to make sure we adhere to a couple of things. I think we need to, number one, look at and make sure we understand the beach management plan, because a lot is founded upon that in terms of services, and we want to make sure whatever we recommend here, and the thing we are recommending here, we are confident complies with the beach management plan. And also, we want to make sure it balances the needs of both the visitors as well as the residents of the city of the Isle of Palms. In those previous discussions, great debate, great thought, great energy was put into what's the right solution in those previous years. These are some of the solutions that were brought forth in the previous work before our engagement. I think it's worth just discussing, and I'm not going to discuss them, but at least noting that a lot of good thoughts have been put out there in terms of what's the best solution for the parking issues for the, for the city. And these are just some of them that were brought up, and I will kind of leave it at that, just in the essence of time. But a lot of good thought was put into that, that we use that to begin our evaluation. Shifting gears here a little bit, now we said before, we want to make sure our analysis is a data-driven analysis. So whatever we recommend really responds back to the data, so we needed to make sure we had a good understanding of the traffic flows and the parking characteristics throughout the city. So we spent a fair amount of time looking at the data. We have a number of data sources that we went into. Of course, the Isle of Palms have a number of count stations throughout the island, a couple of them really. And we basically use that because they're counting traffic every day, different places along the island. And they do it year after year, so we've begun to look at that, understand it. SC DOT, South County Department Transit Station, as well, has permanent count stations on the Isle of Palms Connector. Again, we want to make sure those things tie together. They also do other count stations periodically throughout the year on the, in the city of Isle of Palms. So we want to make sure we use that data. And then this past summer during the peak beach season, we went out and did additional traffic counts ourselves where we thought we needed some additional reinforcement of that data, and again, more current data. And then for both traffic as well as parking, parking conditions out there today. And we'll talk about that as we go through this presentation. Some of the traffic and parking data that Stantec did this past year, just so you're aware of it, we did two directional traffic counts at seven locations on the island during the week up here mentioned in May. And that is, if you, if you recall, that is the Memorial Day week, around that Memorial Day. So it's a good, healthy, it's not the highest weekend, but nonetheless, it's a good, very healthy, that we looked at two directions on a number of different locations of how people move about the island and where congestion occurs today and what volumes are associated with that. We also took turning movement counts, that is, how many people turn right, go straight, turn left, at some of these major intersections that are critical to the network. And again, going back to the congestion issue, we want to look at how it responds back to congestion. And then we did parking, what we call parking studies, data collection, where we wanted to make sure we knew exactly what parking was going on where throughout the entire island on that day, the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. Again, we made sure we timed it such that it was a nice sunny day, it was a good, healthy volume, and because we counted that day, we can actually, you know, factor it up or down based upon the traffic volumes for other conditions to analyze those as well. And one of the ways, really the best way we came about in terms of how to collect the immense amount of parking data that people visiting the beach are doing it in that day was really do aerial photography. And that's really the way we collected it, allows us to know where people are parking, how long they're parking, and how many total parkers at different times of the day. And we'll summarize some of that material for tonight. This is a graph, it's a very busy graph, but let me explain it to you real quickly because, again, just to understand where we are in terms of the data going on with this particular study. This is a graph of 52 weeks out of the year. So column one is the first week in January, and column 52 is the last week in December. So you see every week throughout here, this is the average weekly traffic on both the Isle of Palms Connector and Palm Boulevard at Breach Inlet. Okay? So what it shows is that the red graphs are Palm Boulevard at Breach Inlet. It shows every week how much traffic was out there. The annual average daily is about 7,300, but you can see exactly which weeks you exceed that. And then going to the top bar, the gold bar, is Isle of Palms Connector. And again, every week, how much, how many traffic, how many vehicles cross those permanent count stations on the Isle of Palms Connector. And we have called out, if you can read them, some of the various weeks associated with some of the holidays that you have a lot of traffic on. So if you look at this, spring break is one up here, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Fourth of July is the largest right there, Labor Day. And after Labor Day, things begin to taper off, as you well know. This allows us to get statistically validity in terms of not only how many people are parking out there, but also how the flows are happening throughout the entire year. We've also summarized it by month as well, but this allows us to look independently at each week and to understand the traffic flows out there as how they relate to other times of the year. Another interesting feature that we looked at was day of the week. How does one day of the week stack up with another day of the week? These are bar charts that indicate each day of the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday through Sunday, and the winter averages are shown in the, in the blue. As you can see, those are relatively flat. And again, during the winter months, we basically have more stable, you know, population here. The annual average is the red, and the summer months are the gold. Now, the gold are what we're looking at primarily because we want to understand not only during those peak weeks, but which day of the weeks cause us most concern, and it obviously shows us really the Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays are big day events. And of course, to no one's surprise, a lot of that is not just the residents moving about the island and people shopping and doing business, but also the visitors coming in. So we're taking this data, not just about a month, a week, and a day, but to understand how the traffic flows in addition to the counts of what we took around the island in terms of where they're going on this, within the city of the Isle of Palms. We also looked in detail by time of day to understand the congestion issue. This graph, it's a little busy here, but bear with me, I'll work with you on it. The top graph, which is shown in the green, shows a summer, Saturday or Sunday, in terms of how much traffic is out on the Isle of Palms Connector, accessing the island at eight o'clock in the morning. And this shows at 10 o'clock, you've got some of your peak traffic out there, and it really stays steady through about three or four o'clock in the afternoon on the Isle of Palms Connector during a summer, a summer weekday, weekend, I'm sorry, Saturday and Sunday. The Saturday and Sunday on an average weekday are shown in the red, and basically the midday week for averages are shown in the blue. But really, again, as everyone understands, really, the weekends on the summers are some of the most congested times, and those are the ones we're looking at in terms of those traffic flows, not only just on and off the island, but also, you know, throughout the island. This particular graph shows not just by amount of traffic, but also by direction, because that again, it leads to congestion. So what it shows us here is how much traffic is shown in the blue as inbound traffic on a particular summer weekend, Saturday, where it goes up and it builds up with the blue basically till 10 o'clock, and it basically stays reasonably steady until about four o'clock, coming inbound. And then outbound, it spikes up at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then it basically picks up again in the mid-afternoon when everybody begins to exit the island. And again, we're, the spike in the morning is kind of, when we begin thinking about it, so that's really the renters that are turning over. You know, they need to go ahead and check out and leave the island, so that's kind of why people are leaving at that spike in the morning, according to this graph. So we're understanding not only the days and the time, but also the directionality of the, of the traffic. This graph shows, again, we have the counts at Breach's Inlet, we also have counts at Isle of Palms Connector. We have them by direction. And now, this graph indicates if we took the people inbound minus the people leaving, what's the net result over a typical Saturday? This is the actual Saturday where we did our parking counts. So it shows us that if we essentially started the island at midnight, right, it shows that in the morning time, we have more people exiting, going to work, go to shop, go to other events, going off the island, and then quickly turning back up to, where it's about two o'clock in the day, we've got about 8,500 additional vehicles on the island. When you basically take the people coming on, subtracting out the people leaving, that we've got to work with in terms of how we process this traffic. And then really, it's not till later in five o'clock in the afternoon does it get back down to reasonable. But this, this allows us to understand how traffic builds onto the island on a particular summer weekday, weekend, and how we want to respond to that. So these are some of the statistics that we're using to begin looking at the traffic flow and how it, how it impacts the condition that we want to evaluate. We also mentioned data collection regarding parking, and we indicated the way we did this, and I'll show you just a quick example of it, is we basically had a, had a fixed-wing aircraft fly the island, snap pictures of it on every 30-minute interval to make sure we know not only how long they parked, where they parked, and how many parkers we had on the island. So we have a good understanding of that. It occurred on Saturday, May 24th, and we showed the, not only by block, but also by street and block, and block on those streets. Here's one example, I'm just going to flip through these slides quickly so you can see on this particular day how we captured that slide. Here's, here's a shot, and you can recognize this area. This is the county park on the right. This is the municipal lot, Ocean Boulevard, the core area of town. And if you take this right here, it goes out to the Isle of Palms. Everybody knows pretty much where we're at, right? So these are two lots that we're just going to, to basically show you the representation of the process of how we collected this data. This is at 9:30. So you see a few more cars show up from nine o'clock, and then we go to 10 o'clock, 11:30. And you're seeing, again, the county lot is filling up slightly sooner than the municipal lot, 11 o'clock, and that's about the time that they shut down the Isle of Palms, I mean, the county lot, because they have no, no more space, and they pass them along. And then the municipal lot begins to continue to fill. And really, about this time, we've got both lots completely full. And again, we're still going, 12:30, one o'clock, two o'clock, and you see still people waiting to get into the, the county facility, and your municipal lot is full. Two o'clock, 2:30, three, 3:30, you see a few spaces begin to develop in there, people beginning to trickle out. Four, 4:30, five, 5:30, and six, you see people beginning to leave. So this process in terms of how we collected the data and analyzed, it gave us a good understanding of how the traffic builds up and how it begins to dissipate in the afternoon by not just these two lots we're showing examples of, but also by each block face and every street along the island on the beachfront. So this is the process in which we use to begin understanding and evaluating the parking issue. This graph indicates the total amount of parkers on the Isle of Palms for that Saturday that we collected. And if I look at the bottom, the bottom of the green line shows the amount of on-street parking that occurred island-wide, and the peaking of it really at two o'clock. And at that two o'clock, we had, on that particular day, we had 1,044 cars parked on the streets in the city of Isle of Palms. The lots that we talked about, not just those lots, we also had the central lot and a few other lots, showed here where they filled up basically at 12 o'clock like we talked about and stayed steady all the way till about 3:30. And when you add the on-street parking with the city lots, you get the total amount of parking, beachfront parking that's going on throughout the day. So we understand exactly how much parking is happening on each hour and what we're dealing with. So we have a good quantification of how much parking we're dealing with out here. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the proposed plan and why we came up with this plan and why we think this may work well for the city, and it's been used reasonably similar in other places. So I want to talk a little bit about that next, and I'll take time and hopefully I'll cover it where it's coherent and everyone understands it, but we'll take any questions. But we're talking about basically a parking permit program where people who park on the rightway, curb parking basically, or on-street parking, would be required to purchase a permit to allow them to park on. It won't be a, it won't be a metered situation, but it'll be basically, you will be required to, if you want to park on the public rightway in the city, you would need to get, acquire a permit. And we'll talk about how that would be occur. First of all, we're talking about this parking permit program only occurring for on-street parking. Okay? If you're, well, let's, let's follow these slides here, I don't want to jump ahead. Only really during the peak beach season. You remember those bar graphs we looked at in terms of which weeks of the year, which months of the year? Really, this parking permit program would only be required to be during those peak, peak beach seasons. Makes no sense to operate at any other time. So, so really, whatever those bookends are, we'll, and we're, we're still under debate of when that would begin and when it would drop off, but we want to make sure we do it where it's reasonable to all involved. But it would be a beginning date on whatever day it may be, and an ending date probably right after Labor Day sometime, and then all the rest of the time, it would not be any permit required. So it's really just during those peak beach seasons where we're talking about. Also, really, we really have a problem except for really during that mid-part of the day, nine to six. So we're talking about some, again, these, these are proposed, there's nothing been decided yet. The council will make any kind of recommendations, but some amount of time, those are, that's when the permits would be required. Okay? So again, we don't want to make it orders for everyone, but we want to make sure it's reasonable and it works. And we're not talking about adjusting any parking that's out there today that's on street. In other words, if it's, if it's illegal to park in this area today, then it would be illegal to park there in the future under this plan. Okay? So we're not talking about changing anything on the curb face in terms of what would be available for parking or not. We're just talking about, under this program, program, we have allowing to basically cap the amount of parking we're going to have island-wide. So this is a part of the plan. And consulting our, the city's legal staff, being public rightway, we really can't discriminate one way or the other between a resident versus a visitor. So basically, if you park in front of your home during those times, during those peak seasons, you need a pass. Pull into your driveway, don't, and you won't need a pass, or pull into the garage or whatever. Program would not apply to vehicles parked on private property, and the program would not apply to the municipal lot or the, or the kiosk on-street parking down on Ocean Boulevard or the county lot. Those are, those would not change any operation as they are today under this proposal. Okay? We're just talking about the curb parking at other locations. What does this do for us? It allows us to manage the number of on-street parkers. And also, this, this type of system allows us, if so desired, to vary the pricing for a permit based upon the day of the week, or time of the day, or whatever, how we're specifically going to get. For example, you go to Beach Walker Park in Kiowa, they have a pricing plan that if you park there on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's one rate, if you park on the weekends, another rate. This concept would allow that if that's what council wants to do. It would be a highly automated, we'll talk about how that'd work, and it does comply with the beach management plan. So it does have a number of attributes in terms of some of the issues we're talking about. Now, how, how would this function? We sell permits via an online resource. You'd go to the Isle of Palms, they'd say, "Parking permits for sale, click here." You'd go online, you could buy a permit online. And that's the way a lot of people probably would, would do this. The other, other opportunity would be, and this has all been tried and true, is to have a parking app. If you have a smartphone, you can download an app and you can register a parking, get a parking permit actually on your trip to the beach. Hopefully you're not driving at the same time you're doing this, but you can basically use an app to purchase a permit. Or for the people who don't want to do the online or the app during normal business hours of public safety business, that they would, as is currently proposed, could go in and purchase a parking permit. Now, the types of permits could vary by a number of things. Right now, we're thinking that they're, they would, they'd be sold on three, three levels, an annual pass for the entire season, let's say from, say if it starts at Memorial Day and ends at Labor Day, for the whole time. Or you could pay, you could, you could get a weekly pass... Or you could pay, you could get a weekly pass, or even a daily pass. It'd be up to the choosing, and the prices have not been established yet, so we don't know right now what we're proposing for these things, but we want to make sure it's reasonable, we want to make sure it's probably consistent not with what's charged, not only charged today in some of the lots, but also in other beach communities around the Charleston area. We're proposing that the license plate for that vehicle would be the credentialing identity. In other words, you wouldn't have a hang tag, you wouldn't have a bumper sticker, you wouldn't have a decal on the window, it'd be the license plate. When you purchase that permit, you give that license plate, and that license plate would be the credential. So if your license plate is 123ABC, you'd log that in, and you wanted to buy an annual pass, that vehicle would be good to park anywhere the whole year long, based on that license plate. And these are applications that have been done in other cities, but that would, and then enforcement is going to have to be a key here to make this work, everyone knows that, and there's ways to make sure we have a database of permitted permits for that day of the beach, and you can either do it handheld or some other things in terms of making sure those license plates are valid for that day, in terms of making sure, and then there'd be a citation if they're not valid for that day. Okay, we're in midstream, we've got a lot of stuff to do if we implement this by next year. Some of the things that we are in process of looking at, the permit program costs and pricing, and again, I think the council's decision so far is this would be kind of a cost-neutral situation. They're not looking to, you know, make a lot of revenue off of it, just to control it, to make sure we've got reasonable amounts of safety involved, so the cost and pricing is still underway, evaluating the number of permits for any type of act, it's still being evaluated, considered, based upon our data and the data materials there, but there is proposal to move into this in the next beach season, 2015, hence the meeting tonight to get comments on this. Concluding, we believe this permit program will be able to manage the number of visitors to ensure we have a safe environment during the peak beach season. We think it contributes to reducing traffic congestion, it allows visitors to plan their trips, and if the beach is so congested on one particular day, they'll know because the parking permits are expired, and they can visit another day. It allows them to spread out their trips, and also allows to comply with the beach management plan that we talked about previously. Now, I've gone over a lot of material, and I appreciate your patience and your attention, and Mayor, I think at this time, I'll sit down and I'll be available if there are questions.
Okay, before you sit down, one thing you need to refer everybody on is the meeting you had with DOT.
Oh, yes, yes. Most of the roads in the city are DOT-owned roads, and of course, we want to make sure we, we have a lot of stakeholders involved. We met with the DOT a couple of weeks ago, and talked about generally the plan, and we feel like we've got buy-in from DOT there. They feel like this is something they could work with, so we feel like that base has been touched, and we're okay with the DOT in terms of them working with us on it.
That's a major step that people don't realize, because the DOT has a lot to say with what happens on their roads and their rights, so the approach we're taking is open, transparent to them, and they see the benefit of it to everyone, so that's very good. Okay, I have people who've asked to speak, I'm going to call you by name, I probably will mispronounce your name, but it's your handwriting. No stick your order, just in the way the sheets fell out. Juras? Juris? Juras? Juras?
34, I thought, Paul.
Well, the mic, we're recording this, and so everybody can hear you.
You can bring it right.
No, no, just that one.
The mic is...
All of you, very much, like everything we've done, I would ask as you flesh out this plan...
Switch here, is it switched on?
Hold on, hold on.
I think Gary is...
Well, someone throw the switch, I think the mic's on.
We need you to speak into the mic because it's being captured for the record.
Now you're good.
Okay. Once again, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this Volunteers Council Planning Commission. Terrific work, very patient.
Yes, thank you.
I live on Palm Boulevard, so I have a particular interest. So what I'm going to ask you is, as you flesh out this plan, please give some consideration to those of us who live in second row, and perhaps give us that same four feet on that side that you give on the first-row side, because it is very difficult, not just side streets, but it's very difficult sometimes to get out of the driveway. So I'd appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jim Owens, I know you're here. I live at 2805 Palm Boulevard, and Rick, you and I have spoken on the phone. A couple of issues you have not addressed tonight. Number one is...
I don't think you're...
Five, 95% of the people in here understand the Beach Management Act, period. So either you, please do it, or council, please do it, because I don't understand it. I've been to numerous meetings, I know there are a certain amount of spaces that have to be provided, you have not gone into that, it's important. Also, I've been told by Douglas, as the crow flies, one mile either direction from the county and city lots, we'll talk about this. I believe, Mr. Mayor, you have the authority to implement no parking either direction, which would take you down to third and beyond Palm Court. I don't know whether that's a truism or not, but I've asked, and I have not gotten a concrete answer. So, and I believe that is in what I've been told, the Beach Management Act, so that needs to be taken into consideration. Number one, another issue is, have you all thought about rearranging the county and city parking lots to accommodate more cars? You know, it's like playing tic-tos, you know? You can do that. So I was looking to rearranging parking. If you go to a concert, sometimes people put out extra chairs, maybe there's a way to reconfigure that. Also, y'all have not touched on utilities, and I have been to every utility company that provides this island, and they must have access to their utilities 24/7. I have three in front of my house, two on my property, one in front of my house. Therefore, that needs to be taken into serious consideration. And finally, many of us contributed lots of money to beautify Palm Boulevard by the planting of these trees on the Mayor Carmen Bunch's merril ship. Those are in the easement, Mr. Day, council, will they have to be torn down? That's my question. Thank you for your time, and I wish that you would please address my questions. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next person to ask to speak is Walter.
Can we, I think we can clear up the beach management plan, because I know STANTEC has said how many spaces we need and how many to fill. Because I think we're mixing up having no parking because we fulfill the beach management plan, but I think it's more how much parking we have to have even though we have the lives.
The, go ahead. I mean, the beach management plan, everybody's aware of it, is a requirement by the state that if we ever needed, if we ever had a storm or had critical need for state funding for replenishing the beach, without a beach management plan, the state wouldn't come forward. We have filed a beach management plan, 2008, 2007? In that plan, you have to delineate how many parking spaces are available for the public within a certain distance of each beach access point. We've done that, and there are different criteria as far as what passes and are acceptable parking in the event that the state had to spend some money to replenish the beach. We are about to, I guess, redo the beach management plan, we've asked STANTEC and others. In the original plan, we put the maximum parking available islandwide, we've now asked to compute what the minimum parking would be to qualify, I'm not sure that the OCRM would accept that, but that's a hope. We'll have to engage it, but it is something we're taking up, I believe, it is STANTEC that has, or is it ourselves? I don't remember.
No, we have not asked STANTEC, they've not been tasked with that yet, but the goal was to only identify in the future plan that which we would be required to maintain full and complete access, rather than identify everything. And to Mr. Owens' point, we probably have some of the greatest amount of public beach access of any beach, so we do have more than what is required according to the beach management law.
Okay. And can you just respond to the minimum number of parking spaces required, Russell?
Yeah. Okay. In turn, it deals with the amount of, miles along the beach, number of access points that you have for, and whether it's a public park or not, is there a regional park? If you have a regional park, which we have at the county park, you have to have 150 spaces for that park, and we have more than that for the park. Okay, so that checks, that's about that. And for the other on-street parking that you need, for the size of the beach you have, the number of spaces, access points, you need 198, and over and above 150, and that would meet the minimum of the beach management plan, and the inventory far exceeds.
The next person that wanted to address us is Walter.
John Reagan-Walters. Hello, I'm John Reagan-Walters, I live on 30th Avenue, 130th Avenue and 430th and Palm. And seems like we've been talking about parking forever, and when I was a kid in high school, mowing the lawn, mowing around that "no parking toe-in" sign there on Palm Boulevard and 38th and Palm, I never thought we'd come to this. But anyway, here we are, and one of the things I want to, you know, I was reading the Island Eye News the other day, and read some of the comments by council members, and some of them, or some of them, I think, well, I'd like to address some of those, because some of the comments weren't really factual. I mean, I read one comment from one council member that said something to the fact that there really hasn't been a whole lot of change on street landscaping in the last 10 years. It's been drastic in the last 10 years, there's been a lot of it. Now, I'm not against the on-street landscaping, I just wish they'd let me do it when I try to, you know, it's, and, but the city does enforce that also, that's another disparity is there is, and I can show, I can show places in the last 10 years, in the last two to three years, where stuff has been landscaped out, not only on Palm but on side streets. But when you look at, the city has enforced, multiple entities have, the city have enforced on me, so, and just to give one for instance, I was getting ready to go to Afghanistan, I'm sitting at Fort McCoy, Wisconsin, I get a call from the city wanting me to, you know, get rid of it, saying they're going to find me daily, and I had one week went home before I got went overseas, I met with Mike Satilli, he was mayor at the time, he and Linda, I met, after Mike cooled me down, because I was really hot when I got that phone call from Fort McCoy, I was ready to rip somebody's head off. But after he calmed me down, you know, a good citizen works with the city, and so I worked with the city, we came to a compromise, and we got past it. I come home from Afghanistan, brand-new, brand-new rental house built across the street from me, landscaped out to Palm Boulevard. So, and what I've seen with most of the landscaping is not that it's local residents, most of the landscaping is being done by rental homes, by places that are big, you know, owned by big, you know, out-of-town people with, you know, and I guess it's easier to track down an owner, a local owner than it is to track down somebody that may be under a corporation name or whatever. But the city does enforce it, and like I said, I have multiple incidents that I've had enforced on me. So to get beyond that, the parking on Palm, you know, one thing, it said, any spaces that are currently legal parking, legal parking's Cameron, legal parking's on all the side streets, 31st, 30th, 29th, all the side streets. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't think we should try and push it back further, but there was another council member's comment that was that we should contain it between 21st and 41st. And that is not a, that's not a good idea. I mean, the Isle of Palms, it's all of our island, it's, you know, the people down toward beach inlet, it's the people down, you know, in Wild Dunes, everybody should bear the brunt of this parking problem we have. I mean, we, you know, I admit, Palm Boulevard, we're going to probably get the most of it, but, I mean, Ocean Boulevard should take some of it, Wild Dunes, who would be the primary beneficiary of the beach renovation, they should take on a portion of it, we should all give up some spaces, if we're going to do that way. Now, looking at the plan, I don't, you know, as far as our, as far as the spaces we're providing, the passes, annual passes are good, weekly passes are good, but I don't think that we should give a huge discount for those passes, because after all, this isn't south of the border where we're trying to get them to come in more often and use our concession stands. I mean, where they're parking, they're not using our concession stands, our concession stands are all up and down Ocean Boulevard. So, you know, the Windjammer, the Dinghy, the Banana Commander, places all up and down there are not benefiting from these people. So, we're hurting our businesses. So I think that we need to look at taking and charge a premium for those passes. And another thing, I know it was said that we can't, that, you know, that we can't, you know, that we have to charge residents and all, just like we would anybody else. However, there needs to be something done, throw us a bone on Palm Boulevard. Between 21st and 41st, less than a fourth of those residents are owner-occupied homes. Most of them are rental houses or family homes that they come down, you know, most of the family homes have gone and become rental houses, have been sold off, but I mean, there are still some families who have a house that they only use as a family. But as far as owner-occupied, you live here, you vote here, this is your home, I'd say less than a fourth of them on Palm Boulevard are. And that being the case, the owners of homes on Palm Boulevard, where it's your bona fide residence, not one where you're claiming it because you live in Windsboro and you'd rather pay taxes on your property up down here, you know, lower taxes here than there, but this is your bona fide home, then you should be able to go and, if we're going to have this parking pass thing, you should be able to buy a season pass for $100, $200, whatever, that basically excludes all the frontage that you have on a straight right-of-way on your property. I mean, that's not unreasonable, being how much we're having to bear here. And, but I would just ask that council members who've made these comments, go back, drive around the island, look, and you will see what I'm talking about, about the, you know, where the landscaping's happening and how new it is. I mean, some of it, and if you're not sure, meet with me, I'll tell you, I'll show you, you'll probably get tired of talking to me. But, you know, I've lived it all my life, I know the history of Palm Boulevard, and it's, you know, it's not traditional, people say it's traditional to park on Palm Boulevard. That's only since the mid-'80s. I mean, before that, now, Palm Boulevard parking problem you were talking about, I think, in 1970, was probably on Palm Boulevard down where Wild Dunes is now, because there was a lot of parking on the sides of the street there, people would keep tires up on the road, and that was a problem. But if they pulled off, a lot of them didn't know how to drive in sand, so when they pulled off, they'd get stuck, and local kids could go down there with a Jeep, pull them out, and make a little money. But other than that, you know, that's, I think, I just ask the council to look at doing those things, one, looking at throwing us a bone, allowing us to, because I think there'd be plenty of parking, even if you did allow those owner-occupied homes, because not all of them will pay a little fee to get to do that, some will, some won't, but I think that should be something that's put in it, and I don't think there should be any huge discounts on annual passes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Julie.
Mayor Frank. If you don't mind, can we go back to Mr. Owens' point? He has a question I've been asking for years about the Beach Management Act, and he mentioned the... And he mentioned the, a mile on either side of the front beach area as being exempt from us requiring to have parking on Palm Boulevard and down Ocean. And I have never received an answer to that. Is that true or not? Can we do that?
If you have adequate parking and restrooms and some other criteria, then you can expand, I think it's one mile on either side of the restroom.
That you could allow no parking?
You would still get, you would still get credit for full and complete access because of what exists at the front beach parking lots. That's, that is the point, that according to the way that the beach management act law is written, you would still get credit for that even if you took out what public parking is available on the roads in those areas.
So then it is true. Thank you.
But there's no parking on Ocean.
Right.
And then.
But I'm talking specifically 21st forward to Palm Court North. We don't really have that part.
Probably on the water side. Because it's a certain dimension, certain distance.
Right.
Well, I think that's critical and that's key.
Okay, Julie.
Julie.
Julie Diamond.
135th.
I live over on Sparrow Drive, and I do have a question because today I had to pull off in order to let fire trucks go by. There is a four-foot easement on the beach side, but there is no four-foot easement or restriction on the other side of Palm Boulevard, nor is there restriction on any of the side streets, especially on Waterway where, or not, yeah, on Waterway where people park their trailers, their trucks, their cars, so that they can go to the marina, drop their boats, and then park all the way up Waterway to about Forest Trail. So my question to you, is this a safety issue? Yes, the fire trucks can get down the street, but if I were coming the other way and the fire truck is coming behind me, do I have enough room to get off on the side of the road to get out of their way? Has that been considered? Because if it's not, you need to do it. It's a true safety issue for the residents and for anyone who's here, especially if an E-mess vehicle is coming through. So you need to really take that into consideration, and also the consideration that you need some kind of easement or restriction on Waterway Boulevard also, because it's a true hazard if a vehicle and the fire station's down at 41st and Waterway, if it cannot get through and you're traveling down that street because it's all parked up.
I would say we're very much aware of what's happened on Waterway and at Forest and the suggestion that that's brought about. This plan would, would apply there also, if there's parking permit in that area, and the planning commission is studying that along with what to do with the rain and the total parking scheme.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Stantec did do a survey of the whole Isle of Palms. They've got every road covered. They've shown every right-of-way on Isle of Palms. So, and, and talking about Waterway Boulevard, 41st Avenue, again, one of the slides that showed, I think, 41st Avenue where the cars were parked along the road, and they were not four feet off the road, they were right at their road's edge. So it's a great question, and, but they, they did do that job for living at every road on Isle of Palms and every right-of-way.
The, we ought to address the four-foot question. We have debated and have considered, and one of the worst products of Stantec is one of the main. Right-of-way parking car and the four feet where it stays long, only requires, of course, only requires your tires to be off the road. Other than on Palm Boulevard, which, we have that by special legislation. Except for Palm. You didn't hear what it said? Well, this is not on. All right. Marge.
I'm Marge Swanson. We live behind the New Harris Teeter, actually. I'm concerned. It seems to me, having come here and listening to what happened, this is a done deal. You're all going to vote for it, is that right? I'm talking to council. I'm, I'm not as concerned about this study that's been done. No comment. I, yeah, I feel like it's a done deal, that this is going to happen. Is it going to be every street on the island?
It would affect the entire island.
Every street. Again, okay, then we have questions. What about if you're having parties? Do you have to give every person one of these little permits? I, I, I find this hard to believe. Also, are kids come and visit us often on Saturdays? It can be up to six cars. Is isolation, have enough parking? I, I have a lot of questions. I'm, I'm really concerned about this just being passed.
Okay, the devil's always in the [inaudible]. All these things have to be worked out. The way the city of Charleston has worked it out, that in the historic residential areas, a homeowner buys a, is allowed to buy a pass, parking pass, for the year, $15. That allows him to park on the streets for any length of time. He can also buy a booklet of 30 coupons for his guests, and that ends up to be like 50 cents a coupon. So then if someone comes over, I mean, that is a possibility of the way to do it. The problem is treating everyone equally under the law. So if you make a parking plan, I can't treat you differently than someone who comes from off-island.
But if we own the property and live there, shouldn't there be some way that we don't have to pay $100 or $200 to have our family come by?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I think that's.
We're still working on it.
Extremely important.
The council says that's not possible, but we have.
But we still have, that still is open for discussion.
We may have to break the legal process.
I am aware that there are legalities involved, but I think that it, it's going to change our lifestyles. We often park down on 21st so that we can walk farther on the beach than we would if we walked from our house, which you could do. But I, I think you need to consider all of these possibilities.
Okay.
I do have a bit of a question. You say all the streets on the island. What about the streets in Wild Dunes? Are they included in any way?
They're not public roads, that's the problem.
And also beachside, by the way, is not, is not included.
Beachside also.
Which is right behind the, right behind the county park, because it's a private.
Yeah, okay. And by having to pay extra for all of these permits or whatever they turn out to be, you can call it a bill for a permit, but a tax by any other name is still a tax. I hope you all consider that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello?
Excuse me. I think the audience needs to realize that this is not a done deal. I think that, that we are gathering this information to try to find a way to approach this and not just kick the can down the street. But I for one will not vote for a program that is going to be detrimental to the residents.
All right, Jimmy Ryan.
I think it's written just James, not Jimmy.
James Paul Ryan.
All right, thank you. Let me get it right. Appreciate it. I'd like to know of the 59% of the folks that have taken matters into their own hands and set up on the South Carolina Encroachment Permit of property, have they received permits for that? I don't think there's any way to determine that unless you look at each individual lot. But I'd like to know how many of the 59% of the available parking that is restricted by those who have taken the matters into their own personal hands, how much, how many have it gone through the steps to actually get it done properly? Number two, I think that $20,000 worth of new signs to implement this program is a little over the top. And I figure it comes right out of your minutes for the last meeting.
We haven't even talked about how many signs, have we?
I got it right here if you want to see it.
No, no, I believe you, but I.
Okay. I think the total number of, the average total number of parking spaces per year of 200 will not even cover the surfers that want to come out and enjoy the beach for the summer. And these numbers are coming right out of the minutes that were just approved from your meeting last week. So I think if we're going to pay the money and pay our tax dollars to have these professional engineers come out and do a fine job, have our planning commission, spend all the time with the planning commission, which I served on the planning commission for four years, so I know how, how hard that is and difficult it is, I think that we ought to look at some realistic numbers. And I think for 200, for an average of only 200 people for yearly passes, won't even cover the surfers.
No number of any passes has been passed. I don't know where it was coming from.
This is why we're talking here, yeah.
I think the 200 number comes from the number that we're required to have over the 150 in, in the minutes. It states that we need to have 198. I think that's where that 200 number is coming from.
That's, that's spaces, not paths.
Right.
Right. I think I still have the floor. I think one of the, the worst days of the year is the Fourth of July, and I think we can solve that problem by stopping our fireworks show. I think that there's plenty of opportunities around Charleston, go watch fireworks. If you want to watch fireworks, go off the island and watch fireworks.
All right. Hey, please, please, please. Let him finish, let him finish. Go ahead.
I think the original developers of the island did an excellent job in laying out the land on the island. And while the Isle of Palms has had parking problems since the day it was incorporated in 1953, there'll always be parking problems on the Isle of Palms, and the parking problem is bigger than just the Isle of Palms. And I'd like to know, is there anybody from the South Carolina Department of Transportation here tonight?
Not that I know of.
Okay. I just wondered. And I remember the days before Hugo when you could park from the Windjammer down to Breach Inlet before that property was developed, and I'm not exactly sure why. On one end of the island, you can have parking, and on the other end of the island, you can't have parking. It seems very subjective to me. I think for, for a problem that lasts 45 to 50 days at its worst is a program like this to have your buddies come over and watch your ballgame, your birthday party, a card party, to have to have everybody have a parking permit for those 180 days now we're talking about from April 1st to September 15th. I think that's a little over the top for what we're going to get out of it. I think the cost and the benefit is, is a little off there. I think this, it's obvious by the presentation that was put on tonight that Charleston County has a lot better successful rate at filling up their parking lot before we fill up our parking lot. I talked to Tom O'Wark today. He said their lot is full down there at 10:30, and it turns over three times a day. So there's a lot of, a lot of cars going down there. I think that the parking ought to be free down in the front beach. I think we're driving cars into the neighborhoods by charging prices. We went up from $5 to $10 now, I think, in a, in a county lot. I think we ought to talk to our, our council members on that, and I think that we're driving the folks into our neighborhoods instead of away from our neighborhoods.
Could I count on that?
Yeah.
Statistically, what Stantec showed us is the very first spaces to get taken are all the commercial ones on Ocean Boulevard. Then they migrate to the county park, probably because they have season passes to the county park. It has restrooms and it's kid-friendly. And then they fill up our lot. So I don't see that making it free there, it still gets filled before noon. They're still going to migrate in the neighborhoods because there's just too many cars. The whole object of this plan is to limit the number of cars. If now 1,000 is too much and we hate it, maybe it should be 600 or 500. That's the start. Everything else can evolve after that.
Go ahead.
All right, I think another major issue was brought up earlier was the parking on Waterway Boulevard. I understand now that Morgan Creek has as many as 100 employees now, and they actually instructed their employees to park on Waterway Boulevard. I think that the people who come over and launch a boat, that pay for, to launch their boat, they park outside the thing, they're going to have to buy a pass to park their, their car and their trailer. I think that the, the simple fact of no parking today, and we're not going to change anything that's no parking now, I think is, is not looking at the whole picture as a whole. And my last point, and I appreciate the time that you gave me today, and I appreciate your hard work, and I know there's no perfect plan, I know nobody has the answers, and these aren't even the right answers. These are just my thoughts. But I think maybe you could incorporate our hurricane stickers as a pass system somehow that if you have owner-occupied and you have a, a permit to park your vehicle, maybe that could be incorporated into the pass system as well. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jim. Sandy Stone.
I don't think there's anyone in the room that would disagree that, that we need a change, that we have an ingress and egress problem, and it has to do an awful lot with the parking and availability. And quite, quite frankly, right now, we're wide open. All we're going to go into the future with if we stall what you all are working on is more of a problem. We really are, as citizens, asking you all to do something, and we have been asking you to do something. We need a change, and we need it now, or we're going to miss the 2015 season, and we're going to have exactly what we have right now. So, council, please consider making the change. I know that it isn't perfect, but I think you need to act and move us forward and help us citizens get some relief at a level that you all are aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Perenno? Did I say that right? Here she is.
I'm going to start by saying that I'm not a public speaker. It makes me very nervous to be up here, but I think it's a good cause to talk about. I was reading the meeting minutes, and I know that one of the residents of Isle of Palms called us the less fortunate, and the definition of that is people not fortunate enough to live on the island. So I feel like I need to speak for those people. My family's local. We live two miles from the connector. We've been here since the 1600s. I just want to remind everybody that we pay city taxes, we pay county taxes, we pay federal taxes, we pay income tax and, and sales tax. And so I feel like a lot of my income does go to taxes, and those taxes go back to this community so we can all enjoy it. When I come to the island, thank you. When I come to the island, I pick up trash. I don't ever bring trash with me, and I don't leave trash. I feel like I surf, and all of us surfers, we come to the beach, we respect it, we try to come at off-hours when the surf is good, and we take trash with us. I also want to mention that I work full-time in the community, and I volunteer in my free time, so I feel like I'm giving back, and I hope that y'all will do the same for us. I'm absolutely fine with paying a yearly fee to come to the island and be able to park legally. I want it to be affordable, and I want it to be accessible. That's all I ask, is that you don't limit us from being able to buy a pass and be able to come to the island. And changing the subject a little bit, I was hoping that y'all could try to keep the walkways more accessible. For example, 23rd is kind of a cesspool of water at the moment, and the weeds are growing up to my knees, and saw eight-foot cottonmouth that was very unnerving, and so I feel like we pay enough taxes that we should have a little bit better coverage with that. That, just want to say, shame on all of you residents who have landscaping that have caused us to not be able to park legally.
Thank you. My only comment is none of your taxes come here. Is that what, is that real? Jamie? I see someone moving. I hope it's Jamie.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you sort of give a heads up, the on-deck and in the?
Oh, Dan is on the deck.
Just to.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm a new resident, also not a public speaker. Just because of a new resident doesn't mean that it's, I mean, I think I have Just because of a new resident doesn't mean that it's, I mean, I think I have fresh, sorry, I think I have fresh eyes and fresh ears to a lot of this, and I guess what I don't understand is, I mean, I see the graphs and I see the mountains, but it's, sorry, I see the graphs and I see the mountains displayed, but at the same time, we're talking about the extent of what comes in here. This just seems like just a raucous over 1,000 cars on the busiest weekend, it just doesn't seem like it's as big a deal as it's becoming. It just seems like some of the research sort of disproved what you were looking to find, that it's really not the beachgoers. What about the other 7,000 cars? It's not gonna do anything. I just don't really understand what's going to happen, and so it's, you know, then there are the people like myself who live close to Waterway, who have little kids, who have family members that have disabilities, and so we may not be able to always just walk onto the beach. We may be a mile away, you know, I just don't understand the reason why we all have to be penalized, because it's going to be the residents, the people that live close to Waterway, the people that don't live on the beach, that aren't able to buy a property that's right there, you know, that are going to have to pay this extra tax. To me, it just seems like, and then where does it end? So we are paying, so that we pay that extra money, and then you have the police that you're gonna have to pay to police this situation. Where is the money being saved? Where is it being spent? It just seems a little overdone to me.
Thank you. Very good. All right, Dan? Dan, I live in Edgewater, that's the best I could do. Dan here? Bascom is on deck? Dan?
Hi, Dan Tylak, Edgewater Alley. I want to commend you guys for finally taking action. I think it's great, I agree with Sandy on the approach. I know it's not going to be perfect, but it's a good starting point. A couple of things I'd like you to consider. One, I didn't hear anything discussed about safety, and I believe parking on the second row on Palm Boulevard is an accident waiting to happen. I've seen kids running across the street, you cannot, when you're driving down Palm Boulevard, you can't see between these cars, and it's a very, very dangerous situation. So I hope you guys take that into consideration. The other point I wanted to bring up is, I read in the Island Eye, everybody's comments, and there was some consensus that once the peak load was reached on the island, they would start turning people away. And my concern is, if I'm expecting guests at my house, how do I get them through all this traffic? They're not gonna be parking on the street, they'll be parking on my driveway. How can I get them through so that they do not have issues?
I don't think there's anything that we've said that we're gonna like, put up a barrier on the bridge and say, no one can come across.
There was comments alluding to the fact that...
I mean, there's some people who would like that.
That you will turn them away, and get a bar, but you know.
Not gonna happen.
But it's...
They just won't have a parking pass, so if they park on a right-of-way without a parking pass, they're gonna have a...
Ticket.
A fine. And again, Charleston, it's a $45 fine, just for your...
Okay. And a thing that I've noticed in my bike riding in the morning, especially in the peak season of summer, the county park doesn't open until 9 o'clock. So there's cars lined up waiting to get in. You know, why doesn't it have more reasonable hours? It's hot at 9:00 in the morning, so people have to migrate to the streets. And the final point, and I've had some discussions back and forth about improvements to the bike pass, and apparently there's ongoing conflicts between, well, the state does this, and if we do any action on the bike pass, then we become accountable for it. So the bike pass and the sidewalks in the city are bad right now, and there's overgrowth on a lot of the bushes, you can't get through. That makes people move to the street, which makes the traffic problem worse. It also cuts down on the ability of people to ride their bikes over to the island to avoid cars coming over. So please take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Frank? Frank, I wanna say Basco? Bascom? Frank, are you here? 513 Ocean?
Excuse me, I couldn't quite catch the last name. My name is Peacock, like the bird.
Oh, wow.
First of all, thanks for holding the open house here, it's very, very informative. I only have a couple of comments.
Can you hear me now?
See if it's on.
Hello?
There it goes.
There you go. I only have a couple of comments. I was reading in the paper that there's really nothing that can be done with the 59% of the public spaces that are being encumbered by unauthorized landscaping and things like that. I don't understand that at all. If this gentleman back here has been approached by the city to do various things, everyone should be approached by the city. So I think something ought to be done along those lines. Secondly, when people move anywhere, there's a number of things that they take into account when they buy their homes, and Jimmy, you know it's location, location, location. And so as you're looking at things, people make their decision where they live based on what's around them and what issues that they face when they live somewhere. So I feel sorry for the people who live on, excuse me, long-term, the people between 21st and 41st have a issue with the parking in their front, I mean, on the public right-of-way, but that was understood. There are other people on this island who have maybe elected to live somewhere else because of the issues that do exist and that people are very aware of. So you need to keep that ahead of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, on the issue on encroachments in the right-of-way, the city twists as many arms as we can. Did I say that right? I know Douglas is here, et cetera. We have no formal enforcement power. All we can do is twist arms. You know, the right-of-ways are the state, and the state has the responsibility for enforcing it. We go to the state and say, you need to enforce it, and I wanna be, I'm not sure if I can be kind. They don't. You know, they are sympathetic but don't have resources to do it, and so it doesn't get done. They've written letters to property owners, some in your neighborhood, about cleaning it up, getting rid of it, et cetera, and the property owners ignore it, and we have no enforcement powers. So it's a long, arduous struggle for us with the state, and we can't just deal with it on a one-street basis, we need to deal with it island-wide. If we can ever bed down a parking solution, I think our next major task is what to do with the encroachments to free up and make it equal for everyone, so that's my two cents on that. Anybody else have any issue? That was the last...
Really?
We had some maybes who want to speak, and I'll ask you to come up in a minute, but some of the maybes, if you wanted to, there was Susan McKay, and, another question mark here. Anyhow, I'll just open it up. Anybody who wants to raise their hand and come forward, we'll bring it up. Let me address the...
Susan's over there.
Susan's here?
Wait. Ask the representative.
You gotta come to the mic.
Yeah, line up.
Hey, how you doing? Hey, Michael, it was, I just wanted to know, this databank that's holding all the cars and all those records, can I pull it up in my home and see if a car parked across the street has a permit, or talk about enforcement? Can I do that?
We haven't got to the enforcement phase. We've talked to a couple of vendors to figure out how it can be enforced, how the app and the website can be done, but then we've talked to vendors about how to enforce it. I don't know how to make, I don't know how it's going to be enforced yet.
I mean, if it was public knowledge, and I could pull it up, and I could call the city and say, "Who's he poos out there, doesn't have a permit, could you come pick him up?" But if I can't, I don't see how the police are gonna enforce something like that.
Well, it wouldn't be the police force, per se, it would be special personnel.
Okay. All right, well, maybe if you could just look into that, because we all have an interest in it, so if we could do that, that would be good.
Thank you.
All right.
Glenn Thornburg, 100 Charleston Boulevard, House with a Red Roof. You cannot drive a golf cart across the connector or the other bridge, so that means that every golf cart that's on the island is owned by a resident, and so I think we seriously do not do enough for the golf cart people, and for sure, if you have a golf cart, shouldn't have to have any permit to park, because we're taking up a fourth of the space, and we can park in little tiny places, so that's my comment.
Please.
I am Chris Bowen, I live on Sparrow Drive, and actually, the gentleman preceding me addressed the question that I had, or at least raised the question that I had, which is how golf carts would be subject to these regulations and how they would be enforced, since my golf cart does not have a license plate.
That's a subject we haven't talked about at all, and my guess is that there's no way to enforce it, if it's a golf cart, because it would be residents here and there's no license plate, so...
For reference, I have actually seen a IOP police officer issue a parking ticket to an illegally parked golf cart, and where there would be any, it was clipped onto the steering wheel, and I took a look at it, and there was absolutely nothing linking the parking ticket back to the owner, so I guess it was a, if you find it in the kindness of your heart, please pay this parking ticket. So, yeah, you know, I was curious about that.
You're right.
So outside of that, though, I'm just curious, so we have 59%, we do have a parking problem. I live in Forest Trail. We all experience this problem very differently. This is largely irrelevant to anybody who lives in wild dunes, this is very relevant to the people who live along Palm Boulevard, I understand that. So we paid some very smart people a boatload of taxpayer money to tell us that a lot of people come during holiday weekends, and they come in the morning and they leave in the afternoon. They also told us that about 60% of spaces that would be parking spaces are covered in encroachments. I understand that it is difficult to get people to do things that the government wants them to do sometimes. That's tough, I get it. What I don't understand is why we want to institute a new tax that some of us who live a little bit further away from the beach will bear the brunt of, in order to solve a problem that is caused by people who are breaking the law. And I also don't understand why we want to have this solution be something that is based on technology which is being panned all across the country as an invasion of privacy, driving around with license plate scanners and recording people's vehicle locations into a database. I don't like the thought of the government doing that, I don't like the thought of a private company doing that. There are a lot of privacy considerations to that that certainly have not been addressed by anybody, including the state and federal governments and the companies that harvest and use this data however they use it. Thank you.
My name is Chris Brown, I live on Carolina Boulevard. Unfortunately, I live on the wrong side of Carolina Boulevard, because I live on the side closest to Palm. Now, about 95% of the people who live on that side of Carolina Boulevard, from Breach Inlet all the way down to 10th, have no place to park other than in the state right-of-way, because our lots and houses are close to the road. The other side of the street, they're set way back. So now you're penalizing us, because we're on the wrong side of the street, and I have to pay for the privilege of parking at my own house. Me, my wife, three children, two grandchildren, and anybody else that comes. So now, if, I've heard the figure bandied about of $100 a year, which doesn't sound too bad, but now here we are, living on social security, and you want me to pay $1,000 a year for the privilege of parking in my house with my kids? I could go to Russia and get a better deal than that.
My name's Mary Chason, and I live on 31st Avenue, and we too may be considered part of the unfortunates if we live between 21st and 41st, but I've only lived here 20 years, so I'm a newcomer. But one of the reasons that I loved this island, and I moved here, I lived in Miami, Florida all my life, and there are two beaches in Miami that you can go to as a public beach. One is South Beach, and one is Crandon Park, and all you think of in Miami is these beautiful beaches. But there, all the hotels and condos and multi-multi-million dollar homes own, or think they own, the ocean. The one thing I loved about Isle of Palms was that the beach company did not own the ocean, the people do not own the ocean, God owns this ocean, and it's here for us all to enjoy. So I hate the fact that we're going to make a huge deal out of a three-month problem so that people can't come here and see this beautiful ocean, because if I had not have been able to come here years ago to visit, I wouldn't have ever moved here, because I wouldn't have known about it, because I couldn't have gotten to the ocean. But I know there's a problem, we don't even go Longfront Beach during those three months, but if we have to, we take a golf cart, but what's gonna happen if you buy this permit for your car that you normally drive, and then the day that all the grandkids are here, you have to bring the trucker, the Suburban, or something that totes all these people, now you've gotta have another permit. So it's just, we're making a really big mountain out of something that maybe is a problem, but maybe isn't that bad of a problem. Thank you.
I'm Suzanne Brown, I live at Carolina, on Carolina Boulevard. I have two questions. What if, with this parking thing, I've had medical problems, so I have therapists come, I have nurses come, every one of them's gonna have to get a permit? I mean, they can't park in my driveway, because there's only two cars, and we've got two cars. So that is a severe problem if you've got medical issues or other issues, there's no, you need the help when you need the help, if it's in the three months, or if it's not in the three months. I have questions from two other people. The rec center, are you gonna have to have a parking permit to park at the rec center?
It's a good question. We haven't worked that out. Norma Jean asked the same question.
And also, is there gonna be a special place to put golf carts? That was a question one of the people around me asked. And do they have to have permits? I think they should, if we have to have them, they should have to have them.
Golf carts are a very special item on this island. We love our golf carts.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not fair to us who don't, can't afford golf carts.
There are probably a thousand golf carts on the island. The state treats a golf cart as the same as a vehicle, so if you're parked in a state-owned right-of-way, as far as it needs to have the same legitimate positioning as a car. As far as how this permit system would work with a golf cart, since there is no license plate, that's something we haven't dealt with. So the odds are, we won't deal with it, which means the golf carts will park, as long as they're parked legally, as far as off the right-of-way, I mean, off the road, et cetera, there's no way we can, we could cite them, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's another thing that has to be worked out.
I'm Be Love, live on 9 Cent Dollar Drive. Thank you all for all your work, I think it's a waste of my taxpayers' money, I think the plan is a waste of my taxpayers' money, and I just want to reiterate a few things that other people said. I'm totally opposed to having to pay to park...